Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here, sorry.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We will now move on to special event applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is for the Eid prayer, which would be held tomorrow in Springwood Park. Next is the AYF, American Youth Football Banquet, which would be held in Springwood Park. The Drumming Circle to be held on the beach. And not in the Dune Gardens, I should mention, just on the sand. The Soulless Sunrise on June 20th. The Asbury Park Record Show would be held on June 27th in Kennedy Park. And the Luckin Bill Concerts in Bradley Park. A wedding reception in Kennedy Park, Cross and Orange. And we have three weddings. One on May 22nd, June 19th, and August 23rd. Are there any questions on any of the applications? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next.
We're now on to proclamation. We have a proclamation for the Rick Benjamin and Paragon Ragtime Orchestra that I believe Councilmember Chapman will be reading.
Okay, and I just wanted to note that this concert is actually taking place tonight at the Band Shell above the Fifth Avenue Pavilion. Whereas the achievements of Asbury Park native Rick Benjamin are those that songs are written about, and whereas his affinity for the extraordinary and proficiency in accentuating the beauty of rare and classic music is equivalent to the artistry and craftsmanship of a silversmith. And whereas Mr. Benjamin's discovery of a compilation of works by Arthur Pryor, a bandleader considered to be Asbury Park's first musical superstar, ignited his passion for Americana music and the establishment of the Paragon Ragtime Orchestra. And whereas the Paragon Ragtime Orchestra will kick off the return of Asbury Park's annual summer concert series at the Axelrod Performing Arts Centers Up on the Roof Concert Series. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor John Moore and the Asbury Park City Council do hereby acknowledge the contributions to musicology made by Rick Benjamin and thank him for his dedication to the preservation and promotion of one of the city's rare gems. Be it furthermore resolved that as the city continues to move forward, it is apropos that we also look back with nostalgia and relish our community's rich musical heritage and its station in the annals of history by celebrating the restoration and grand reopening of the Arthur Pryor Band Shell on its 150th anniversary.
Thank you. We will now move on to items to be presented. We have the Asbury Park Equity Committee Recommendations.
So that would be, okay, great.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, should we, yeah. Hi Pastor Jennings, it's Elaine Rocha. I wasn't sure if we should just kick it off or what have you. So Jason, I'll let you take it away.
Awesome, Elaine, stay off mute. I'm gonna, my name is Pastor Jason Jennings. I'm the Chair of the Equity Committee, along with Elaine Rocha, who's the Vice Chair of the Equity Committee. And we have some recommendations that after a period of six months meeting, deliberating, that we would like to share with the council. I believe these recommendations are being presented today for the first time. Elaine, since you put this together, since you wrote, once we, you know, once we got all our recommendations together, you finalized it in a draft and submitted it. So why don't you go ahead and speak to it?
Absolutely, thanks Pastor Jennings for the introduction. And thank you to the council for giving us the opportunity to speak to the recommendations. I'm not sure if you all have received a copy of the memo. Amy and Yvonne, was that circulated? Or Donna, I don't know if you're on the call?
Yes, it was circulated, Elaine.
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, and I'm not sure if that's going to be made available to the public afterwards or how you'll treat that. But for now, I'll just do a walkthrough for whomever's listening as to, you know, the inception of the Equity Committee and what we were tasked with and how we moved forward with our work. So, you know, as the council knows, following the resolution that you set forth in September for the creation of an Equity Committee, there were a group of us who either applied or were appointed by the council. And we got together, I want to say for the first time in October of 2020. And we had unfortunately only one meeting in person, where we just got to know one another and then we were remote for the rest of the duration. And as we understood it, the committee was put together to look at, you know, first and foremost, we were to look at, you know, the Asbury Park Police Department's policies and procedures on use of force, discrimination. And frankly, you name it, we looked at, we tried to look at it as much as we could. And the goals as set forth in the resolution, I'll just articulate for those on the call, were to ensure justice and equity in all for the community, engage in discussions on current policies and procedures concerning police enforcement and discrimination, and recommend updates to clarify and implement new policies and procedures as appropriate in order to ensure fairness. So to try and achieve these goals and to develop some recommendations, the committee, who were made up of citizens and members of the police force alike, met biweekly over the course of approximately six months and to talk about these topics and to see how did we want to move forward. Because, you know, it was such a broad scope of work. We wanted to make sure we drive, we were able to drive as much progress as we could and come up with recommendations and also listen to the community. So one of the hallmarks of our work was to definitely set aside some time for community meetings, which we hosted three meetings, two of which were an aggregate of recommendations for community leaders from various businesses or social justice organizations. We hosted two of those and then an open meeting for the community to come and voice their feedback on different topics. So as we worked forward from October through the time we developed this memo, which was in April, we talked as a community, as committee rather. And there were two pieces of legislation that had been kicked around in the state of New Jersey. One was with regard to the creation of a civilian review board. And the other was with respect to the development of some type of residency requirement authorizing, you know, local city councils, if you will, to, you know, determine, you know, the residency requirements from its members of its police force, its fire department, et cetera. So we did some diligence on our end to see what was the status of these pieces of legislation. And candidly, they seem to have stalled as of the time we were taking a look at them. But be that as it may, you know, the council or the committee rather was well aware that topics such as the creation of some type of civilian review board were definitely being pushed by Asbury Park community at large. And, you know, some members of the committee and others were interested to learn more about it. So we, and we also received a detailed recommendation via Deputy Mayor Quinn through separate members of the Asbury Park community who had put together or started to put together a potential framework for a civilian review board. So what we did was we talked about it as a committee and then we really wanted to hear from the community at large and for these, from community leaders as to their views on both residency requirements, the creation of a civilian review board, and any other recommendations, quite frankly, or feedback that we thought we needed to hear about in order to craft our recommendations. So that just sort of sets the stage as to the work that the committee did. And, you know, as a member of the committee, I do want to give a shout out to my committee members, including Deputy Mayor Quinn, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton, and, you know, Pastor Jason Jennings and a whole host of other folks who are very active in the community as it is and, you know, who have other obligations. And everyone, you know, Deputy Thompson, you know, who really brought, you know, their views and their thoughts and their opinions. And we really had, I think, open and frank conversations as a committee. I think everyone felt that their opinions were being heard. And we also were grateful for the community members who shared with us their open and honest feedback as to these topics. So as we digested the feedback from these committee meetings with the community and amongst ourselves, there was clearly some general themes that came out. And a lot, some of the issues were, you know, there's, I guess, issues of, I would just characterize them as, you know, issues of trust as between the community at large and the police force. And again, there was no particular individuals or groups called out. It was saying like, listen, you know, there's, you know, just a lack of interaction, you know, community interaction and police interaction, where the community and police get to know one another. And so that was a general theme that was definitely, that permeated, quite frankly, the conversations. And, you know, just from all aspects. And also that police, maybe there can be some more, I guess, social work assistance for the police because there should be matters that police perhaps are not best situated to respond to if there's issues with domestic issues or mental health issues. So again, those were the overarching themes that came out of the conversations, again, among the committee members and from the community members that we listened to. So what we sort of developed were a series of recommendations. And we, again, we took notes from the community. We took notes amongst ourselves. And candidly, I was just the author who cobbled together all the various recommendations and tried to put them as succinctly and as straightforward as I could into the six-page memo that we shared with the council. But again, I was just the drafter. I was not the, I was not, the ideas were from everyone and I tried to synthesize them as much as I could. So I guess if we could, for the councils, I'll pause and see if anybody has any questions and then I'll dive into the recommendations. Or Jason, if you have anything you'd like to add.
No, I think Elaine, you pretty much summed it all up. I don't know who hasn't had an opportunity to look at the recommendations yet. That's on his call. But I think, I think for the most part, over, like you said, over the last six months, we really uncovered a lot. And those main four items that we put on there as recommendations seem to be the biggest push of what the committee is asking. And as you said, we didn't draw these recommendations. We heard from the community. So those main four recommendations that have gone out to the council is really what the community has been saying to us and what we heard from the community in those three meetings that we had. So I think Elaine, I think you pretty much summed it all up.
Great, thank you Pastor Jay. So again, the first recommendation, if we could just walk through it briefly, again, as I talked about, I guess at the top of the meeting, was the creation of some sort of civilian review board, which is really to drive accountability. It was consistent, it was frequent, you know, some type of oversight committee or review board to establish transparency and accountability with regard to issues of misconduct with regard, you know, with regard to the police. As mentioned, there was a suggested framework that was shared with Deputy Mayor Quinn. We took a look at that. I do think, you know, it's in the nascent stages of a framework because, you know, if you skip to sort of the latter pages of the memo, I'm a big fan of saying, okay, here's a recommendation. What are, but what are the potential hurdles and pitfalls that could, that could come up with that? And if we sort of skip to the potential, you know, how did I frame it, limitations and barriers? You know, there, you know, there is, I guess, somewhat, some debate as to what the structure and the scope of authority should be with regard to any type of review board, right? There's been some talk of subpoena powers, non-sup pena powers. So from the committee's perspective, we just caution that the council, you know, should investigate this and explore this, but be cognizant of the various laws that are pending in the state of New Jersey as it relates to review boards. Look at some benchmarks, quite frankly. Look at review boards who have been implemented successfully. Yes or no, and how did that go and why not? I think the feedback from the committee was that to establish any type of review board, there should be a committee to look at, you know, the details of that, of that, of the creation of a review board. I personally would recommend for the council to appoint a separate committee just to look at that topic. Because again, it's, you know, there's, there's going to be the police force in the community and probably from a broader perspective will definitely have a view as to what that should look like or should not look like. So there's going to be a whole host of issues that can crop up. So I think that's something that should be certainly looked into. The community, again, wants that to be investigated. But I think, you know, you just have to proceed with diligence, research, build out a framework, have it looked at from a risk management and legal perspective and go from there. But that is the recommendation. And again, just cognizant of the limitations and barriers. So that's the first recommendation. The next recommendation was with regard to residency requirements. And the committee, candidly, is aware that we are a civil service city. And what that means, and again, I'm badly paraphrasing. I'm not an expert, but I understand that there's, you know, a priority, a list of priority, I think it's maybe veterans. And I'm not sure if Donna, if you want to pipe up, but there's a certain list of applicants for the police department that certain levels, again, maybe it's veterans or police members from other police forces who might take priority. And then it goes to the community members or other applicants, how they shake out in that list. And, you know, one of the themes or the concerns or the areas of discussion, points of discussion over the course of six months with the committee and also the community meetings was, you know, the diversity of the police force. And the police force should look and reflect the community it serves. And that might be difficult with a civil service city. And we understand that, you know, if you're a civil service city or community, it's very difficult to not be one. So again, the recommendations for, you know, Asbury Park to perhaps, you know, the council to sort of look to other cities and towns that are also civil service communities who might be interested in changing from that and sort of see what pathways there are or there are not to explore that. But in addition to that, you know, be that as it may, we should look to, you know, recruit other members of the Asbury Park community into the police force, you know. There is, you know, look at forming recruiting programs from the high school. You know, what, you know, have more interaction and more frequent interaction as between the Asbury Park Police and the students. Develop that consistent dialogue. So again, perhaps even down to the grammar school level. So folks in the community and students coming up through our community understand the job opportunities that there are in state government just generally, city government generally, and also in our police force. Just because those are great opportunities. And again, when you can recruit folks from the community, they live here, they understand the community. So again, that's another area where I think perhaps a separate subcommittee should be gathered together to sort of look at the various issues of civil service city. And again, maybe shape and build out some actual programs, some frameworks of programs that we could look to to recruit students and community members into opportunities in our police force. The next recommendation was on speaking to crisis intervention and training and sort of using social services, social workers in lieu of arresting and citing people. So again, you know, there's been various recommendations, I recall, from the community conversations that we had that were really enlightening to me. You know, I learned so much about community and how they feel about the police and, you know, both. There was a lot of positive as well as not so positive. But again, what are those circumstances where we can, you know, ensure our police department are best trained to respond to issues where there might be mental health situations? But also to give them the tools, like perhaps a social worker on call during the, you know, various police shifts. So if there is an issue where someone, there might be a domestic issue or a situation where there might, they might, you know, the individual might require some mental health, you know, counseling. The police that are on the job can call that resource in. So that is something that, you know, was definitely paramount in the conversations. Again, enhance training for our police, but also to make sure they have the right tools and the right resources available to them so they can best service the community. So there were some great recommendations, which are also detailed in the memo. But again, perhaps, again, the council might consider a subcommittee to look at, you know, this crisis intervention training, work with, you know, have members perhaps of the police on that training committee, but also look to partner with some of the social services in the city and in the state and see what we can leverage. And finally, the other recommendation that really bubbled up was community policing. And what that means is have the police really be a part of the community. Like get to know people in the community, you know, walk the beat, you know, get out of the cars, walk the streets, get to know the citizens, you know, establish that trust and that rapport and that relationship. That was something that many folks talked about. And then also, you know, have perhaps activities as between the police and the community, whether it's athletic events or get to know you events. So I think that's also something that really resonated in some of the recommendations that came up through the conversations. And again, I think perhaps another, an actual subcommittee to build out, you know, a calendar of events and a calendar of programs and, you know, work with the police department. And again, I'll defer to the police to figure out, like, what will that look like as far as actually walking among the community and getting to know them? Because again, that's just a way to build and bridge trust when you know somebody personally and you know where they live and you know where their homes are and who their neighbors are. It's just, it's just a way to build trust. So, you know, those were the four major categories and some other categories that were raised that we thought were important for consideration where, you know, as we think about these issues, I forget who it was, but it was one of the community leaders mentioned, you know, environmental justice issues with regard to planning and zoning. The city should, you know, be cognizant of those issues. And I think, you know, the city is when they, when they look at those issues. But again, I'm not in all of those conversations. So I think it was just an issue to have in the back of the council's mind. Someone mentioned hiring perhaps an equity coach or chief diversity officer for the city. And again, I think that might be something worth exploring. And then also we were thinking about, you know, from a positive and trust building and experience building perspective. You know, Asbury Park is such a unique and incredible community of so many different people and so many different experiences. Maybe we can leverage that professional network of individuals to create opportunities for our students and for our young people. Mentorship programs or have, you know, professional speaker series where people who are part of different industries come in and can work and help our students, you know, see the possibilities and opportunities that are out there. So again, that was, you know, something that was discussed. So again, if you, and if you continue through the memo, we talked about, again, the limitations and barriers with the creation of a civilian review board. And again, same thing with the residency requirements. Again, when you're a civil service city, there are definitely barriers to entry there. But we can try and have different recruiting programs for our community. And then again, everything always costs money, right? So again, there's funding and those issues that, again, the city council, who, you know, are well experienced in managing our budget with the city manager to look at the budget and say, okay, where do we, where do we, which levers can we pull to make sure those programs that are a priority, we can help facilitate and drive forward? So that's the sum and substance of the recommendations. I'll stop talking now to see if there are any questions. Or again, Jason, if there's anything you want to add. Or also Amy or Yvonne, you are also wonderful members of our Equity Committee if you want to add anything that I may have missed.
I think you've covered everything very well, Elaine. And the only thing I'd like to say is thank you to you, Reverend Jennings and the committee for your diligence and your patience and your dedication, also to all of the public who agreed to participate and to give us their information and share their experiences and their ideas.
Yeah, I agree with Yvonne, same, you know. Elaine, you took six months' worth of random ideas and put them into a cohesive memo with amazing recommendations. So I think you, I'm not sure you're taking enough credit for, you know, any idea anybody had. You put it into a really great memo that will be made public. We'll get it up tomorrow. I'm sorry, I thought it was up already. So I didn't realize it was not. But well, I'm sure we can get it, Donna can get it up in the next day or two. I want to thank, same as Yvonne said, this committee, this wasn't, you know, these weren't always easy discussions. There were times when all of us were frustrated and had different points of view. And it remained extremely respectful and for the most part, pretty confidential because a number of people, you know, the nonprofits and some of the community activists, you know, some of that stuff, they didn't, they didn't want repeated. And so I want to give them credit for taking the time out of their day and sharing their experiences. And I want to thank Guy Thompson and Steve, who, you know, provided some real perspective on what it's like policing right now and, you know, the good, the bad and the ugly of it. And so kudos to both of them for, you know, for taking the time and really kind of going through, you know, what they're experiencing at officers and what they're experiencing trying to get new recruits. So, you know, again, thanks Jason and Elaine and the public, the nonprofits that met with us, the community leaders that met with us, Guy and Steve and everybody for really having a really, I think, thoughtful and meaningful and respectful discussion and coming up with what I hope are lots of, you know, recommendations we can start the process of talking about and then implementing. That's it for me.
Thanks, everyone. I just think you guys did a great job. Great, great feedback, great insight. And I think we're all looking forward to moving along with this. Thank you.
Hey, it's, excuse me, it's more. Elaine and all, you never thank you enough for a great job. The council, and I guess you guys were criticized, it took too long. I'll go back to the old carpenter's saying, like, you know, measure twice and cut once. So I think you guys did this. We're at a place right now, and I'm going to tell you on record, totally for a CRB for Asbury Park. There's some things that I made notes all over the place. I may go here or there, and I apologize. So for the civilian review board, looking at my notes, obviously, all of this cannot be done overnight. But we can start by appointing a CRB. Hold on. I definitely agree with you as far as police being more out in the street, as far as like getting to know the neighborhood. It's the best thing going. The one thing I kind of disagree with you, and it's not personal, I think, and being a person who was in civil service for so many years and known other towns that are not civil service, the law is the state law. And I forget what governor it was, the KO, whoever. They said all police and fire department members can move out of town. Worst law ever done. So I don't know if we can override the state law. Let me, let me see, funding, crisis intervention. So like basically, I'm all bored on this. I think we need to CRB. And I would ask you guys at the committee, and I'm sure you reached out to other towns, other cities, how did they do this? So guide us, guide this council, guide me. What is the next? step? I just don't want to say, okay, people apply. What is the next step to get this in, in Asbury Park? I mean, so looking for suggestions from this committee that's been working on this for like six to eight months and done one heck of a job. So please give us a little bit of guidance because I don't want to foul it up after you guys did all this great work. Again, your suggestions, what the next steps would be for we to get to a CRB. Thank you again. Great job all on the committee. Uh, Pastor Jennings, Amy, uh, everybody on it. Uh, I mean, thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, this is Kendall. Uh, one of the things I didn't hear, and maybe you can think about, uh, years ago, I know a lot of the communities had neighborhood watch programs where the community would work together and, and talk and communicate. And if things happened and it was the first to get in touch with, the captain of the community would get in touch with the police, uh, department quickly. Another thing, um, years ago, I, I don't know if it was the council or just whoever volunteered to ride along in a police car with, uh, policemen, uh, like special people that have been around here for a while, like myself, you know, would be a, a good project for me to do, to work with, um, to work with the program, ride around. And maybe I can introduce some of the new cops to different people. But I just want to let you know, I'm just throwing that out there if you think about it. And, uh, thanks for helping out. We appreciate it. That's it.
Yeah, I think great job, everybody. Jesse, I think the ride along is a great idea. When I got elected, I, I did a, a couple of ride alongs and they were great. And John's absolutely right about the civil service. Um, I think the committee was leaning a little bit towards maybe doing, um, and this is not my area of the law, so Fred can correct me, but kind of, um, uh, of, of, uh, a supporting document to the legislation going on in Trenton, requiring all towns to do some sort of version of a civilian review and to look into amending the residency requirements to something like five years. In other words, you live five years in the town and then you can move out. And I don't know that anyone's saying you have to live here, you know, the entire time, although, you know, an argument, an argument can probably be made for that. But, um, I think we were thinking more of like, could we, is there, is there a way that we can support our, the Trenton legislation that would make this universal in all of New Jersey? And, um, and maybe that's more of a Fred question for another day, but I think that's kind of where we were leaning towards, um, residency, uh, and CCRB in terms, you know, when we talk about the state legislation, how do we support that in a way that, um, you know, the, the, the powers that be in Trenton know that, you know, Asbury is behind those two forms of legislation.
Deputy Mayor Quinn, I can skip it, um, on that question. It is routine. Many municipalities do adopt resolutions in support of or conversely opposing legislation that is pending before this. So if the council is supportive of those two bills that have not yet moved forward and, and been signed into law, we could draft a resolution showing the support of the governing body of Asbury Park and, and send that to Trenton and all of our legislative, uh, representatives that would show, uh, the strong support of the city council in your discretion to support one or both of those bills.
Okay. It's, it's more Fred, throw it up and put it on the next meeting.
Hey, um, excuse me, but I have just one more thing to say. This is Kendall. Uh, I don't know if you realize it or not, but so many people in Neptune lives in Asbury. It's Asbury and Neptune like cousins and family members and it's so close together. I would suggest that you, uh, talk, maybe send a letter out to their council and maybe they can, uh, put together a program like we're doing. And I think it'd help tremendously then. Uh, I just believe that'd be a good idea to help out you guys and us. But that's it. Thank you.
And, uh, before we just end this, I, I just want to get Elaine's on mute mic. So if we, can we just give her one minute to kind of wrap up because she's texting.
She's been unmuted, yes. She wants the dog. I'm like, I'm like, I can't respond. Um, thank you. Sorry. I was just like, um, I'm on mute. Sorry. I muted myself. I'm so used to muting and unmuting and I was muted into oblivion. But, um, thank you all for, um, the feedback. I think again, to Amy's point with the residency requirements, some of the feedback in committee was that again, it wouldn't just be necessarily Asbury only, but perhaps again, as Councilman Kendall was mentioning neighboring towns, maybe we could, you know, liaise with Neptune and, and Ocean Township or whatever, but just have folks who are, who know Asbury Park and, and know the community. So something like that. And again, it wasn't, you know, we hadn't reached a set in stone type of residency requirement. Um, so that's something to be kicked around. As far as the civilian review board, um, Mayor Moore, um, we hear you and we think, I think, me personally, next steps, I think the council should have, you know, a subgroup, um, dedicated to just looking at that because again, you want to make sure you kick all the potential legal issues, um, you know, out and handle them the right way immediately. I'm a big fan of, I, I forget what you said at the beginning, sort of like, um, I say like go slow to go fast. Again, everyone wants everything done yesterday, but you have to do the planning, uh, do the research, um, and then you map out the framework and then you'd be, you know, execution becomes so much faster when you just do the detailed work. So I would strongly recommend for this council, in my opinion, have a subgroup just focused on that. Again, and there are so many folks who are interested in the community at large, who have started thinking about frameworks, maybe leverage some of those individuals to be part of that subcommittee to say, okay, like what are the possible pitfalls? What are any legal consequences that we have to be concerned about? I do think this is an opportunity for Asbury Park to be at the leading edge of creating civilian review board, but it needs to be thoughtfully, thoughtfully, methodically done and to make sure it, it falls within the parameters of the current law. That's my, that's my two cents.
And there was a good two cents in that issue. You say you, you applied to be the chairperson.
Sure. I'll be the chairperson of that. But no, but all kidding aside, I'm happy, happy to serve in whatever capacity, um, uh, you see fit. But again, that, I think there's a lot of, uh, great, great, uh, folks who are, are very interested in this, but happy to, uh, to, uh, volunteer. And I'll leave that up to the council's decision.
Well, again, I, I think you heard the entire council saying we are in agreement with, with that we need a CRB and now we just have to do it the right way. So, uh, you're still the standing committee that's there and we will take your recommendations how to move forward.
Great. Thank you.
But you have to be on the committee.
Okay, okay. Okay, Mayor Moore. Thank you. Sure. Um, but thank you again. Thanks for your time. And again, if, if anybody, as, as you digest the memo and, 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 you know, reflect on this conversation, if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to myself or Pastor Jennings or any other member of the committee.
And again, I, I thank everybody on the committee. I'm forgetting names. I know James Souter, everybody else, uh, cannot thank you enough. And again, so many people complained we were going too slow. But again, I'd rather do it right the first time than bog it down by fouling it up. So again, thank you guys so very, very much. And again, you heard the entire council. We are in agreement. We need a CRB. We're going to do it. We're, we're going to do it right. It may take another month or two to do it right, but it's going to happen.
Does that complete the comments?
Yep. Next.
We are now on to matters from city council. Councilmember Chapman.
Hi, everyone. So we've got a great, uh, six week program coming up. It's the Asbury Park Beach Patrol, uh, 2021 Junior Life Guard Program. It's for our younger residents, ages 10 to 15, where they learn to become lifeguards in accordance with the United States Life Saving Association. It's a six week program that'll run June 28th through August 6th, Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings from 7:45 till 9. Um, the deadline for registration is June 15th. There's no cost for our residents, our children. Uh, it's a hundred dollars for non-residents. And you can register online at cityofasburypark slash J R G U A R D. That's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton.
Uh, I don't have anything at this time. Just again, thank you to the equity committee.
Councilmember Kendall.
Also, I don't have anything at this time. Thank you anyway.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
I, I, I also don't have anything, Melody. Thank you.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, I want to thank Amy and Yvonne and every member of the equity committee to get us this far. And we're like, we're right there and we're going to be doing the right thing. And, uh, I thank everybody on the committee and I, let's just go forward. Thank you.
Matters from the city manager?
I have nothing, Melody.
Matters from the city attorney?
And nothing from me either, Melody. Thank you.
You're welcome. We will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Members of the public may participate by using the raise hand function in the meeting or by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and complete address for the record. I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open?
Second.
All in favor? The, the meeting is now open to the public. I am calling upon 3350. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ernest Magnoli, 813 First Avenue, Asbury, Cedar Avenue, West Long Branch and 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. Uh, I would, uh, like to concentrate tonight on some comments that, uh, city attorney Refredo made about me recently, referring that I'm on hallucinogenic drugs, uh, I'm a liar and et cetera. So here we go. Ansel Grim Aaron, James Aaron, uh, uh, Honaker, the former prosecutor, Robert, a former Superior Court judge who's Mr. Refredo's civil partner, uh, they're all over there in Ocean. Now for many years during Operation Bid Rig, when most people in Asbury went to prison, federal prison, of course, Ansel Grim Aaron were, were our lawyers and Solomon Dweck was at the middle of Operation Bid Rig. Okay. You just have to watch that Operation Bid Rig. It's a YouTube documentary about Solomon Dweck. Now, where did Dweck have his offices and do a lot of his business? In Ansel Grim Aaron's Ocean office with a lawyer partner there named Zaro, right? Now, the $25 million checks kind of came out of that office, the bribes to, uh, Mayor Schneider in Long Branch, where at the Deal Country Club were made in the presence of Jimmy Aaron from Ansel Grim Aaron, of which Dweck testified under federal, uh, testimony that he gave a $10,000 bribe to Mayor Schneider and Jimmy Aaron Law Firm, the city lawyers for Long Branch. So he, here's what we have. Ansel Grim Aaron for 35 years has destroyed Asbury and Long Branch. And they, they opened up the Eaton Town Mall and the Sea View Mall and stole and took all the businesses over there. They made millions, millions on that deal. They took the Asbury Park press out of, of Asbury, right? And they continue. In addition, Ansel Grim Aaron's partners, law firm, whatever, they come to Asbury, they have sex with the city tax collectors, uh, females. They're married, but they like to have sex in Long Branch with the staff, with the, with the female court clerks. I'm talking about Jimmy Aaron. Then he likes to come here with drugs, drunk, with Judge Jacarino, get the place closed down, have them go to prison.
Cut, cut Mr. Magnoli off.
All right, I'm, I'm moving on.
And I say that because, and I, I say that because his accusations are intolerable and he doesn't even know his facts. And so Grim and Aaron has not been the city attorney for 30, 35 years. And his personal attacks and why, and so Grim and Aaron do not sue him for their personal attacks just bewilders me. So, sorry, sir, you're done.
Calling upon Michael Kushner. Michael Kushner, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, excuse me. Hello, Michael Kushner, 1100 Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park. Uh, hello, hello, mayor and city council. First, let me say that I am so pleased to hear you support a, the establishment of a civilian review board here in Asbury Park. I also just want to give my perspective and really speak out to Chief also to Guy, um, to all the Asbury Park police officers out there. I, I respect law enforcement and I support the police. I strongly support police oversight and, and these two positions are not mutually exclusive. I think we have to stop equating police oversight with anti-law enforcement. It is a lie and unfortunately it's a lie that has made it political suicide for elected officials to speak up in support of police oversight. So, so kudos to you to have the, the courage to speak up and do what's right. I think to those who are against this, and we've spoken to some people and there are, you're definitely going to run into resistance. To me, it's common sense. I can think of no profession, certainly ones that have, um, the responsibility for the wellbeing of people, um, or that, um, uh, poor judgment has tragic, tragic circumstances that are not accountable to some external objective review by some governing body, be it the FDA, the FAA, the NTSB, FDA, um, the American Medical Association. There is nothing like that for police. All these other professions do not police themselves. So I think that it's frankly crazy to me that this is even a controversial subject because we know that when we get on that plane and when we get on that train.
One minute remaining.
When we go and see that doctor, we know that they have a, they're, they're, they have a, um, they're routinely, routinely reviewed. They, they're tasked with a certain amount of continuing education. They're subject to discipline, removal, if they fail to meet specific standards that are all set by external bodies. So this is about accountability. Um, it's not radical. It's not progressive. It's common sense. So thank you for supporting it. I'll continue to support law enforcement and I, I look forward to the establishment of this civilian review board and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Polly. Polly, please state your name and complete address for the record.
Hi, it's Polly Shilga, right here next to Michael Kushner at our dining room table, 1100 Fifth Avenue. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Everybody got me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Um, I don't have a lot to add to what Michael said, but we have both been sitting here writing notes like crazy. Uh, Elaine, thank you so much for your, for your hard work and for the committee, um, putting together all of the, um, all the material that you did and speaking with members in the community. I, I, I'm not even going to look at my notes right now because, um, I just want to say there's, there's really only one thing that, um, needs to happen in order to establish this, uh, citizen or, or civilian review board. And thank you again for agreeing to go forward with this. And that's to, as Elaine said, Elaine said, look at what other cities have done. And we have, um, at the same time that the equity committee has been working, we have been involved with Asbury Park Demands Police Oversight. And we've done a lot of work, um, exploring what cities have done all over the U.S., in particular in Newark. Uh, we've worked with the ACLU and so we have access, we have information, um, we have the ability to share with you, uh, templates and, and successful, long time work that these other cities have done. Uh, so we're, we're definitely, um, in step with cities who have successfully implemented a C, CRB or CCRB. Um, our, our officers in Asbury Park, we, we know everywhere in the U.S. officers, um, who, who really care about their communities and are, are trying hard to, to do what's right to support, uh, members who are in distress, uh, citizens who are in distress, uh, and, and including, um, officers who want to be on, on, on patrol on the street and be involved in the community. So we know that we have the ability to make this happen in Asbury Park.
One minute remaining.
Please reach out to, uh, the, 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 uh, members of Asbury Park Demands Police Oversight and, um, and know that we have been working right alongside you at, in the equity committee. and know that we have been working right alongside you in the Equity Committee to help to make this happen. So, thanks again, City Council, Mayor Moore, Elaine, and everyone else on the committee. Onward. We can do this thing. Thanks.
I thank you and I thank you for being there yesterday, which was a great day. Next.
I'm calling upon Carrie Butch. Carrie Butch, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. I also want to congratulate the Equity Committee for your recommendations, congratulate the community for those recommendations, and encourage the mayor and council to, you know, continue to show leadership on this and get us a CCRB that is, has some teeth. I was just going over an audit with Rita Moreno, as a matter of fact, and from 20 years ago. And 20 years ago, we had 53 police officers. Now, we have 103 police officers. So, in 20 years, we've grown our police by that much. And we've actually lost about 1,000 folks as far as the census in 20 years. So, I have a couple of things today. One would be to congratulate you on the CCRB recommendation, offer my assistance as always. And I do have one statement about the rent control ordinance that you guys have up for an amendment. I'd like you to think about amending the rent control ordinance to change the word, change the wording to say, instead of saying greater, to say lesser, where it says CPI or 3.5% for renters. So, that is an important piece. I want you guys to think about doing that and also to explore further what the current rent control ordinance that was passed, that you guys have passed, how that is going to impact our community. I know that in Jersey City, during the pandemic, they froze the rent increases. So, I know that, I know you guys care about the folks that live here. And I understand that some of the rental, some of the renters have seen an increase in their rents since we started to discuss rent control in Asbury Park.
One minute remaining.
So, I'm hoping that there's a larger discussion and there's an opportunity for a larger discussion on rent control. Last but not least, I see Joe Marazidi's on the line. Joe, this is Carrie Butch. I've been trying to get in touch with you for a long time. And I've talked to Eileen about having, bringing you in and talk to us about where exactly we are. Share with the Asbury Park community where exactly we are with the redevelopment plan. Because I know that we've committed to a lot of building in Asbury Park. And we would love to have you come and present to the community and share where we are with the redevelopment. My number is 732-982-6942. Give me a call. Again, thank you guys for everything you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carrie, and again, with our ordinance as far as rent control, it can be changed anytime, all the time. And I definitely disagree with you and you can prove me wrong. The police chief can prove me right. In 2001, we did not have 53 police officers. And so, where you're getting your numbers, again, I could be wrong. If I'm wrong, I apologize to you. So, next. Thank you.
I'm calling upon Sarah. Sarah, please state your name and address for the record. Sarah, star six to unmute yourself. Sarah? All right, I'll move on to someone else and we'll come back to Sarah. I'm calling upon 5124. 5124, please state your name and address for the record. 5124, your name and address for the record.
Freedom Moreno, Eighth Avenue. John, I think we did have 53 police officers then. But aside from that, with all the thank yous tonight, I'm not going to, I'm going to be the voice of reason, I guess. I'm glad Polly called because I don't know who she is. But she should attend the planning and zoning meetings because she objects to cars being on the streets. Well, there's going to be hundreds of them when they build those units on Main Street. Soul Avenue, Monroe Avenue, Salvation Army Building, 100 units, 65 units on Monroe. Pay attention, Polly. There's going to be a lot of cars. But aside from that, I want her to talk about, with all that's going on, we decide to buy flag poles to put up. You know, I don't know about this council. I think you sort of want to be ambassadors. This is the way I look at it. But you can't be ambassadors if you have to run a city. What do we need? More problems with putting up flag poles? And organizations coming to City Council, these flag poles are going to be in the municipal complex, am I right? And if they are, the only thing that should be flying there is that American flag and the POW flag under it. You want to have organizational flag poles, put them someplace else. You cannot have them in front of the municipal complex. And Fred, I don't know, you wrote this resolution. It's really hard to understand because I know you pluck different parts from different areas to do it, flag etiquette. But you should be the first one to tell people, the American flag should be flown in front of the municipal complex because we, the people, own the building, not a certain few like you're trying to cater to. You want to put up flags, put them in the Springwood Park, put them in the other parks. But the American flag flies over the municipal complex with the POW flag under it. And why you would care at this time, and why you would care at this time with all the conflicting things that are going on in the world and you're worried about a flag. I think it's terrible that you're even thinking that. But aside from that, you better think about it because nothing flies under the American flag. And we had this argument two years ago and you said Louise and I were wrong when we were right about the flag. I see it in the ordinance here, in the resolution. Fred put it in the resolution, no flag bigger than the American flag flies on the flag pole. And no other flag, no other flag should be there. I don't know what this is all about.
Time's up.
Hey, Rita, number one, happy belated birthday. And as far as like the flag poles, I think it's common in most city halls. Do what? I think it's common in most city halls and Asbury Park is always an anomaly. There are multiple flag poles, one for like the American flag, obviously. And then there's one for the state flag and one for like, we're going to fly the city flag, which will be the first in the history of Asbury Park. And then if ceremonial flag goes up, we'll figure that out. And as far as, again, we'll get the numbers from Chief Kelso as far as Rita. You and I were here in 2001. There was more than 53 police officers, I believe. If not, I apologize to you. And again, happy belated birthday.
Okay, I'm calling upon Sarah. We have Sarah back. Sarah, please state your name and address for the record. We can't hear you, Sarah. Sarah, try star six to unmute yourself. We can't hear Sarah.
Maybe Sarah can just send us an email or something.
Go to the next.
Okay. Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Move to close, Quinn?
Second.
Second, Quinn?
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now closed to the public. We will now move on to the minutes. We have the executive session minutes of April 28th. We have the executive session meeting minutes of May 5th. And we have the regular meeting minutes of April 28th. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to consent agenda. We have the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council member as to any particular item, then said items should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have Resolution 21-221 through 21-228. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept. Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 21-229, which is a resolution approving the payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman will be abstaining from 21-01022. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
We're on to Resolution 21-230, a resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement with the County of Monmouth for dispatch services. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-231, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a professional service agreement with Public Resources Advisory Group for the provision of RAB administration. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-232, a resolution authorizing the purchase of three Kubotos. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Do I have a second?
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yeah.
We're on to Resolution 21-233, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two rear compactor boxes for the Beach Department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-234, a resolution rescinding Resolution 2020-283 and authorizing a contract for the installation of an underground sprinkler system at Sunset and Cannon Park.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-235, a resolution authorizing change order number two, three, and four for the Deal Lake Drive Improvement Projects.
Move it.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-236, a resolution approving change order number five for Bridge and Heck Street improvements.
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
We're on to Resolution 21-237, a resolution adopting the Monmouth County Home Consortium Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Action Plan for the Housing and Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program.
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on Resolution 21-238, a resolution authorizing the reprogramming of funds as a result of a substantial amendment to the city's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Annual Action Plans for Fiscal Years 2017, 2018, and 2019. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-239, a resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Asbury Park to designate 1401 Ocean Avenue LLC as a subsequent developer and to enter into a subsequent developer agreement with 1401 Ocean Avenue LLC for the development of a rooftop deck on the Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel located on the property at block 4204, Lot 1. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
Second, more, but I have a question.
Okay.
This is referring it to the plan, this is referring it to the planning board, correct?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't say that. That was my interpretation all along, but it doesn't say that. Unless it says, unless it's someplace in the 30 pages. But I just want to make sure everybody knows the council has done their due diligence and now we're referring to the planning board so they can do their due diligence.
Should we, Steve, Michelle, can?
So, I, and Mr. Marazidi, I believe, is on the line. Joe, Mike, can you unmute Joe?
He should be coming on. Okay, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The resolution does not specifically require a referral to the planning board, but the mayor is correct, the next step for the developer is to now proceed to the planning board to get approval for the improvements on the roof of the hotel. So, this is an authorization to sign the subsequent developer agreement to allow the project to go forward, subject to many conditions. And in order for it to go forward, another step in the process. And in order for it to go forward, another step in the process is the application to the planning.
So Mr. Marizidi, okay, go ahead, sorry, I'm done.
Nope, I'm, I'm, I'm done too, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, we had a motion and a second, I will move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We go on to Resolution 21-240. A resolution establishing a flag flying policy relating to the display of commemorative or organizational flags on city flag poles. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to Resolution 21-241. A resolution appointing members to the rent leveling board. And the terms will be set at the next council meeting. The members will consist of two tenants, Ladina Als, Allison Gouda, two landlords, Peter Siegel, Mark Hadnitt, and three residents, Jesse Ricks, Kristen Hubert, and Derek Minowblum. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
And just so the public knows, we're adding two alternate positions to that. That'll be appointed at our next meeting, so this, while this is certainly the final stay in the, um, in the, um, the rent control board, there'll be two alternate positions with two people appointed at our, at our next meeting, you know, in case people, you know, can't show up or, you know, so we have alternates. That's it.
Is it, is it two or three?
Two. It's two alternates.
Okay.
We are now on to ordinances, ordinances for introduction. The first ordinance for introduction is Ordinance 2021-18. An ordinance of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the amendment to certain financial agreements within the city with a public hearing date of May 26th. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Move it. Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
The second ordinance is 2021-19. An ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending traffic and parking regulations, Chapter 7, Designating Waterfront Parking for Electric or Plug-In Hybrid Vehicles with a public hearing date of May 26th. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
The third ordinance is Ordinance 21-20. An ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 30 entitled Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey with a public hearing date of June 9th. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Our fourth ordinance for introduction is Ordinance 2021-21. An ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 30 entitled Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey and amending the official zoning map with a public hearing date of June 9th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Our final ordinance in for introduction is Ordinance 2021-22. An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 2021-5 entitled, an ordinance establishing a rent leveling board as well as rules that regulate the price of rent and the rate of rent increase for certain rental housing within the City of Asbury Park and amending and supplementing the code of the City of Asbury Park to establish a new Chapter 15 thereof which shall be entitled Rent Leveling Regulations with a public hearing date of May 26th.
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to second readings of public hearing. The first one will be Ordinance 2021-16, which is the cap rate ordinance for the year 2021. Any brief overview of this ordinance will be given by our CFO, Joanne Bowes.
Uh, hello?
There she is.
There you go.
There you are.
Hi. There I am. Welcome. I'm sorry, people. Okay, let's get back to this cap rate ordinance. Um, it's required by the state in preparation of our current budget. It's a calculation of the amount allowable as an increase in the current budget based on the prior budget excluding grants, capital, and debt service. It's a 3.5% maximum increase we're allowed, and we are under that.
Okay, Melody, you want a public comment?
Sure, does that, does that complete your comments, Joanne?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance 21-16?
Move it.
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Quinn.
Second, more.
All in favor?
Yes. Just give the, just give the instructions. Questions can only relate to the subject.
Absolutely. So we're all in favor for the opening of the public hearing on Ordinance 21-16?
Yes.
The public hearing is now open on Ordinance 21-16. Members of the public may raise their hand in the meeting or use, uh, or by dialing star s, bleh, I just lost my, uh, my spiel. Uh, members of the public may participate by dialing star 9 on your phone to raise your hand in the meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am calling upon. 3350, 3350, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Ernest McNolley, uh, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Pointe Beach, Florida, 813 First Street, Asbury, and Cedar Avenue, West Long Branch. Uh, I just ask to say about the cap, uh, as a former home owner, owner in Asbury and looking to buy again, uh, it's always difficult to get records about the budget and about proposed increases or lower than the cap or at the cap, et cetera. And the, the reason it's difficult is because, uh, uh, at least me and other people I talk to, we can't get through to the CFO, we can't get through to the clerk about it, we can't get documents. So, uh, look, uh, I, I mean, to, to approve this without complete transparency on everything, especially with the cap of the budget, uh, I, I mean, it's being done by the, by the mayor and council without, uh, 15,000 people getting a look at everything. It's all that, thank you.
Mr., okay, thank you, Mr. McNolley, next.
I'm calling upon 5124, 5124, please state your name and complete address for the record.
Hi, Rita Morano, 504 Eighth Avenue. I'm a simple person, could you explain that a little bit more, that we're under the 3.5, uh, increase? Is that what it was? What are we going, what are we going to?
This is Joanne, Rita. Um, last year's budget was 43 million, well, when you add the three and a half percent, it takes us to a maximum of 46. Our, our budget is only 43.
Oh, I see.
So we're $3 million under the amount we're allowed to go to.
Okay, I didn't get it. All right, thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Does that complete your comments, Rita?
Next.
Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the public hearing on Ordinance 21-16.
Move to close.
Second, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 21-16?
Move to adopt. Second.
Second, more.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We will now have the, uh, municipal budget public hearing for the 2021 budget, and a brief overview of the 2021 municipal budget will be given by Donna Viero, the city manager.
Thanks, Melody, thanks, Mayor and council. Uh, this year's budget reflects a decrease of $770,000 from last year's budget, uh, despite almost a half a million in an increase in our, uh, police and fire pension payments as well as our PERS payments. The, uh, police and fire pa, uh, pension payments increased by $653,000, and the PERS increased by $160,000. Um, in addition to that, we're going to be adding a few new positions to the, uh, city organization this year. They include a full-time social worker, um, a part-time rent leveling coordinator. We'll also be having a paid OEM director position, and we'll be hiring an assistant HR director to, uh, take over for our HR director when she plans her retirement, and I think now 37 more payrolls as she has the countdown listed in her office. Um, other significant, um, aspects of this year's budget is the reduction of the police department, um, budget by almost $200,000, and we've increased the social services budget by $47,000. Another item that we should note is the value of homes in the City of Asbury Park have almost doubled since 2017. In 2017, the average assessed value of a, of a home in the city was about $252,000. This year, that same home is assessed at about $407,000. In 2017, the taxes for that home assessed at $252,000, the municipal taxes, not including the school or anything else, were $3,200. This year, that property assessed at $407,000, municipal taxes will only be $3,161,000. So despite the increase of value in the homes, the municipal tax rate has continued to decline and is lower than it was in 2017. So I think that's, um, of great information for everyone to have, so, um, I think those are the summaries I have, and we'll open up the budget to any questions.
Okay, do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public for the 2021 municipal budget hearing?
Move to open?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public for the 2021 municipal budget hearing. Members of the public may participate by raising your hand in the Zoom meeting or by dialing star 9 on your phone to raise your hand. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and your comments must only be about the public hearing on the municipal budget. I am calling upon 3350, please state your name and complete address for the record.
Oh, yeah, Ernest McNolley, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Pointe Beach, Florida, First Avenue, uh, 183 Asbury Park and Cedar Avenue, West Long Branch. Uh, can, can I ask a question of, uh, the city manager who made statements about the budget?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner McNolley.
Okay, okay. Uh, you, you stated that, uh, there's, uh, increases in the, uh, firemen and, and pension.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, you, you also, um, uh, are aware that, I, I don't know how it's approved, but relative to the budget, uh, how is it all the additional positions keep getting approved and all the promotions which are driving these pensions and salaries through the roof? Uh, how, how is the budget and the ability to do that? Meaning, you, you have a budget, you're, you're the city manager, and then the council votes yes to hire new firemen, new police, and promote 10 firemen and 10 police to $10, $20,000, $30,000 more a year. Does the city manager and the CFO ever get a chance to come in and say, wait a minute, we can't afford this?
Does that complete your questions, Mr. McNolley?
Uh, well, that question.
Okay, yeah, so, so, um, the budget was reduced by $770,000, almost a million dollars this year. Those positions that I mentioned were included in there. All the positions that occur and changes throughout the year are budgeted throughout the budget. So if they, if, for example, if a department has a head count of 10 people, we can't hire an 11th unless it's improved in the budget. So that's how that works.
Okay, so then you are saying that all the additional police that are being hired and all the promotions of the police to much higher salaries, same with the fire department, you're saying that the reason that that can get approved is because there's money in the budget?
Correct, it's already budgeted, yes.
Okay, okay. But, but does that also mean that it makes sense for the city? Meaning, maybe we have too many firemen and too many police? That doesn't count.
So the head count, um, has not increased in the police department or in the fire department. Um, they have just been, um, replacements for those people who have retired or resigned. Um, and when that happens, obviously, we need to promote people to fill those positions. So we're not adding any new positions to police or fire in this year's budget, and as I mentioned earlier, we've actually cut the police department due to retirements, um, and some other, um, attrition to about almost $200,000.
I understand, but are you involved with the decision to approve all the promotions? Like when you take a sergeant, you make them a lieutenant, that's a $20,000 a year salary, increase in pension, and you take a lieutenant and make them a captain, you know?
Yeah, so, so those, those promotions are, um, as we mentioned earlier, are all civil service driven, and we obtain a list from civil service, and that's how those promotions are made. Anything else? I guess he's done, Melody.
Okay. I am now calling upon 5124, please state your name and complete address for the record.
Hi, uh, Rita Morano, 504 Eighth. Uh, in the budget today, in the bill resolution, $866,000 was going to the school. Do you know what the amount was in 2017?
Joanne, you have an answer for that?
No, I don't, but that really doesn't have to do with the budget.
Huh? Well, I mean, it's increased, correct?
Yeah, but that doesn't have to do with our budget.
I know, but it, it has, the amount that we have to raise is more this year, right? Than it was last year.
Call me tomorrow, Rita.
Rita, it's John, I'm gonna try to break it down basically to you. Whatever. Whatever the school budget is, the city has to fund. And we fund that either monthly, quarterly, whatever. So yes, th- there's a payment this goes and claims, but there wasn't one the last or one before that. And we have to pay them so they can make salary and they can make their, uh, budget and everything else. And that's by state law. We, we, we cannot change state laws. So whatever the board of education budget is, we have to fund. It's based on a timely timeframe, so they can make payroll and everything. And Joanne will talk to you tomorrow about that. And we, and we have no say over what their budget is.
I know, I, I know all that, but it just increases our, our budget, doesn't it? If we have to come up with more money?
No, Rita, that is not a part of our budget.
Oh, okay. All right, I, okay, I understand.
Okay.
I got you, it's every two weeks.
Nah, I don't think so, because, uh, maybe you, you, you might be correct. Again, happy Thursday.
Right, Joanne, every two weeks?
It's once a month we pay the school.
Oh, once a month you pay the school, okay, eight hundred and sixty six thousand. I, I got you.
Okay?
Yep. I got you, I don't have to call.
Does that complete your comments? Okay. Thank you Rita. I'm now calling upon Carrie Butch. Carrie, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Carrie Butch, I live at five hundred Deal Lake Drive. Um, I actually appreciate you guys working on, on the equity part of the budget with, which is what we've asked. A lot of the activists did make the statement that twenty, twenty-four percent of the budget was going to police while one point five percent was going to health and human services. So you have actively increased the health and human services, but certainly not by much, right? I mean, I mean, when we're talking about where we're putting our money, we're still putting a, a, the percentages might not have changed that much. Or am I wrong? Prove me wrong, I'll have a couple other ques- I have a couple other questions, but a- am I wrong that the percentages really didn't change that much?
I believe you're wrong, but we'll get you the information tomorrow to go on with your next questions.
All right, um, the other part of it is, um, you know, I had spoken to Eileen, Eileen was very excited that, to, to talk to me or, or to, to start the conversation on participatory budgeting. So where are we on the process of, of that with the community doing like a participatory budgeting pro- process? And, um, really taking a look at what, what the community needs and how we're spending our money? And, and having, you know, taxpayers and people that live in town, um, really have a say in how their dollars go. So I know, I know Eileen, you were excited about that, so where is that process now?
Okay, so Carrie, councilwoman. Uh, I, I can answer that mayor. So councilwoman Chapman and I, um, have discussed this, um, the past couple of months. We've reached out to other towns that have been doing this. Um, this is something that needs to be in well before the budget introduction, and this year we just couldn't do it, you know, due to the pandemic. So I'll be, I'll be reviewing this with council over the summer. And, um, if the council, um, and I can come up with a process, we'll look to start something in September for next year's budget.
Okay.
And councilwoman Chapman, please add anything if I missed anything.
Nope, you've got it, thanks Donna.
Yep.
Cause I, I would be interested in helping with that, of course, as always, um. I'm, I'm actually, I do wanna make a statement about the health and human services, because it does feel like we, we just came in out of a pandemic, you know? And, and I, at that point, we did realize, I think, how not having a health department in Asbury Park was kind of a, kinda hobbled us, right, a little bit? In response to, um, how we, how we responded to the pandemic? Even, even so much as in reporting numbers and getting numbers out there. I know.
I, did we lose Carrie?
Looks like she muted herself. I thought maybe she was off.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm back. It was, it actually, that automatically. But anyway, um, I appreciate this conversation, I'd like to continue the conversation just because it was clear that, you know, you know, I do think we need a systemic change. And, um, a systemic change isn't gonna come quickly, but I'm, I'm glad that you guys are taking steps and, and, and showing the community that you're acknowledging and that you're listening. I am, I am glad about that. But systemically, we have to invest in our kids. And we have to invest in our, in our seniors and in the health of the community. So I'd like to, I'd like to talk to you guys about beefing up the budget even more in those areas and having more of an equity part. The other part of the budget that I, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like the community to be much more involved in would be the community block grants and the, and the community development, um, part of the budget. So, so that, I think, I think that, those kind of conversations, I, I think rather than just, I think where your heart is, you don't, your heart is that you wanna have these conversations and these dialogue and this dialogue, so I appreciate that. But let's make it happen this year, let's make it a reality this year.
Does that complete your comments?
Carrie, thank you. Nope, go ahead. Okay, Carrie, uh, you went in and out and everything, so I, I missed one sentence, but if I heard what I thought I heard you say, it was like, we didn't do enough for, uh, COVID. And I, I, I will disagree until the cows come home. I think Asbury Park did more for COVID than any town. You name me another town in Monmouth County in New Jersey that did more, uh, as far as the COVID pandemic. Uh, we reached out to the state, we reached out to the county, we reached out to everybody. We had testing, we had inoculations, we had vaccines, we had anything and everything. We, we gave a hundred thousand dollars to beaches at Carr to help people pay their rent. We've given, we're giving seventy five thousand dollars to fifty five thousand dollars to fulfill and twenty thousand dollars to interface to feed Asbury Park residents. Uh, we have, and you've never attended, and I'm sure you've been busy, but every other Saturday at Second Baptist Church, we opened up a center where we reached out to the freeholders and said, hey, can you give us shots in Asbury Park? And we thought it was a long shot. I, I thank Tracy Rogers for helping me to push this along. And Commissioner Arnoen said, hey John, it's not a long shot, we're doing a red bank, Asbury Park will be second. And Asbury Park was second, and on March twenty seventh, it was one of the happiest days of my life, and councilwoman, councilwoman Clayton and myself had been at every vaccine place at Second Baptist Church every second Saturday. And we, we've been going up and aboard. And tonight, during this meeting right now, it's over, but now, there was, uh, the county and Arnoen and the Grunon family were doing testing, but because there's so many vaccines out there, they were also going to give out vaccines. The problem now is, if you can help us, this, this is where you can help us Carrie, this is where everybody in the city can help us. We have more shots than people. We, anybody in Asbury Park get a shot in twenty-four hours, but nobody's coming forward. Saturday at Second Baptist Church, we had a hundred shots and less than thirty people showed up. We went out to the Springwood Avenue Park and tried to get people to come inside. So, uh, I think we've done more, I think we've done best, I think we've done great. Uh, we need your help, we need everybody's help. Anybody who needs a shot, please get them in touch with us. They will get a shot within twenty-four hours either through the city. And Doug Schultz and Social Services did a great job. I give credit to Donna, the city manager, where she didn't ask mayor and council, she added a staff person to Social Services when the pandemic, when the shots were coming out. And that way we could operate twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and somebody would give back to everybody within twenty-four hours. And if need be, get them a shot as soon as possible. Social Services has sent more than two thousand people in the immediate area, mostly Asbury Park, to get shots at either the VNA, but mostly Brookdale and Second Baptist. And again, they were open tonight, free shots. We advertised all over the place, so if you can help us advertise through your little like click, uh, we can get everybody vaccinated within three weeks. We have that many shots, so please, and again, you were cutting in and out. And if I heard you wrong, I apologize, but I thought you were like taking a shot, the city's like, we didn't do enough for COVID. And I totally disagree with you, and I will to the day I die. And again, I thank you for your help, and I think we're on the same page. You want Asbury Park to be great, we want Asbury Park to be great, and we can all work together for that goal. But again, it's a question about working together and not throwing stones, thank you.
Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meeting to the public on the twenty twenty one municipal budget hearing.
Move to close.
Move to close Quinn. Second Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now closed, the, the public hearing is now closed, yes.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to, or Joanne, just to talk about why we can't vote on the budget tonight?
Sure.
Can I do that now?
Yeah.
So, um, we've had our public hearing this evening, but as required, um, through the state, our budget needs to be reviewed. The state has not yet reviewed our budget, so the council will not vote on the budget until we've had that review by the state, um, which we hope to have within the next month, right, Joanne? We've lost Joanne, okay. So once the, the state reviews our budget, the council will then be able to vote on it, but we wanted to have our public hearing this evening, thank you.
Uh, so the public hearing has been closed on the municipal budget. And before we move to adjournment, I just wanna reach out to Sarah who was having trouble, um, unmuting herself, that if she e- emails me, melody.hartsgrove@cityofasburypark.com, I will forward her comments on to mayor and council. And, uh, we are now on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Quinn. Second Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned.
Thanks everyone.